April 22nd, Select Board Meeting. Would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda at the meeting.
I'll second.
Motion to adopt the agenda in second.
Do we need another executive session for the board?
You don't need an executive session, it will be that in what's called the liberty of session.
Okay.
However, Mr. Chair, you won't need item 11.
We do not need number 11, so we scratch out number 11. Motion in second, that one changed, we scratched item 11. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, none, we have approval of the agenda. Minutes of the last meeting, we have a motion on the minutes. The motion for Mr. Cooley, second.
All second with a note that there were, there was a request for a couple edits.
So we can now make corrections. Charlene, on page five, at the very bottom, where I was speaking about Newton Road, the figure that I quoted or stated was that we, in one flood activity at Newton Road, we spent $800,000, uh, $8,000. Just add a couple zeros. That's my only change, somebody else have changed? No other changes, no other corrections?
No.
Okay.
No, it was just, I had understood that there was some change, I moved away.
And we have a motion in a second, one correction. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, nobody, minutes are passed. The item three, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public. I submitted my report in advance and it's on the town website. I don't have anything to highlight from it. I do have some additions from things that happened Friday and today. One is for the awareness of the community. The town clerk reminds all voters that the informational meeting regarding the budget vote will be held at six o'clock, rather than the customary seven o'clock, next Monday, April 29th, here at the town hall. Informational meeting at six o'clock next Monday. Voting is at the American Legion from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 30th. Additional news is that the fiscal year '23 audit was delivered to the town on Friday morning. It has been posted on the town website. The town treasurer and other finance staff will review it and present it to the board with comment at the next select board meeting. The town highway crew has now changed to its fair weather schedule of four 10-hour days per week. This helps the town by allowing more work to be done per mobilization, meaning moving of equipment to and from job sites through less setting up and taking down. It helps the town crew with a predictable and desirable schedule after the half-year of on-call at all times and mandatory overtime for winter operations. The town crew has removed downtown sand barrels, cleaned culverts, and reshaped ditches on Country Club Road, Town Farm Road, and Park Street Extension, and is grading roads in various parts of Brandon. The seasonal road postings are no longer in effect. Our town crew saved the taxpayers a considerable amount of money by doing the 4,000-hour service on the greater in-house. Lastly, Mr. Bruce Meacham was on-site with his team today at Newton Road to restart the construction work there. They were screening the large soil pile and placing topsoil within the project site. He and I plan to meet with our Highway Division Chief on-site tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager on his report from the public? Not nurse?
No, I think Jan.
Who does? Yes, Jan. Come over here, yeah, come up, please.
Jan Cooley. Seth, did you find out what it costs to mail one of the absentee ballots that I asked last evening?
I did not get, I figured from the town clerk, is she here tonight? She was, she was considering being here tonight, I don't have the per voter figure.
Just, okay, could you have it for the next team?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public for the town manager on his report? Moving on. Item four, Rec. Director's Report.
Thank you, Governor. This is my report for April 22nd. With baseball registration closed, our numbers of participants are up, 168 versus 145 for 2023. This means 14 teams playing on four fields over the course of the next eight weeks. Field cleanup day is scheduled for April 28th, 11:00 a.m. Reach out if you're interested in participating in the helping. Super lessons are back on the menu. Brandon rec. lessons at the Brandon Inn Pool have three different week sessions scheduled for the weeks of June 24th, July 15th, and July 29th. Two more bus trips have been scheduled, an October 3rd trip to Salem, Massachusetts, and the annual winter New York City trip December 14th. Once the parking areas have been confirmed, these will be live on the Brandon rec. website and will fill up within a week. The return of the building and the grounds person, park cleanups are going well. Reinstallation of picnic tables and deployment of extra refuse receptacles to accommodate the move to outdoors will occur over the next couple of weeks. Vermont tennis court resurfacing is to be busy by the end of April to help the work plan for the conversion of Estebrook Port into a multi-use court. Some rep affiliated events and dates to keep in mind as summer approaches. We have our July 6th Independence Day parade and fireworks happens downtown. July 25th and 28th, the Brandon Carnival that occurs at Estebrook. August 3rd, just adding the punk rock festival at Estebrook, teen festival. August the 17th, For the Love of Dogs Car Show at Estebrook. And August 18th, the water slide day, the Nerf War at Estebrook. That is wonderful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Questions from the board for the Rec. Director?
I have one. Bill, when you do the bus trips, I just wanted to make sure, so the cost of the bus and the expenses of the trips are covered by the tickets?
Correct.
And then, do you continue maintaining the policy that if you didn't fill to a certain amount, that wouldn't, it would like to make enough money that it wouldn't proceed? Or have you not needed that for these trips?
With these trips, certainly not. The Salem bus trip is a trip that, that happens, is our first time adding it, but I imagine that there's no expense associated with it except for the bus. New York City bus trip, it looks tender. It's a numbers game as far as, you know, we get to 45 people, 42 people, depending on how it's priced, and after that, it's actually an income in for the, in for the rec. department, we've never had a problem selling out these trips. Other trips that we do, like we have to pay for a lot of tickets prior to an event such as a Celtics bus trip, and we have to buy 50 tickets at one time and then sell the heck out of those tickets. We've had to cancel trips, uh, six or seven years ago, we canceled a trip, we had a Bruins trip, and we had to purchase a lot of, 35 tickets to get the reduced rate, and we scrambled, we were able to sell the, we were able to cancel the bus trip and sell those tickets through a third-party reseller to recoup the cost, and it cost the same money.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, the 168 that are signed for baseball, do you know how many are from Brandon?
Many. If you asked me that before, I could have pointed my number out, but like, the vast majority, and we do, we do again, as is discussed before, serve as the athletic department for Lester, On Creek Academy at Lester, and so those kids at Lester, Whiting, Sudbury, do participate. But hey, get off the top of my head, I wouldn't have given you the exact number, I'd like to reduce that number for you and email it over to you and make it available for the next meeting.
Any other questions from the board? Now, questions from the public for the Rec. Director? I do not see any here, moving on. Moving on, item five, Public Comment and Participation. This is a chance for the public, first in the board?
Yeah, I, I don't read the Rutland Herald regularly, but I recently heard from a few of my neighbors who do, that there was an article that described some of our, our work here, famous select work as deceptive and deceitful, and I found that particularly troubling, especially because it came from one of our board members. And while I, I think it's, um... So, I could say it again if you'd like. So I, I don't read the Rutland Herald, but a couple of my neighbors told me they read an article that described the work of our select board as deceitful and deceptive, and I found that to be troubling because we strive to have open meetings and we don't hide things, and we, we work with an open process, welcoming input. We can disagree about issues, but it's harmful to characterize the board as deceptive and deceitful. And if there's something that's deceptive or deceitful, I guess I'd like to understand what that is so we can clarify.
I'm right here.
Great.
The numbers game that somebody wants, like, the numbers game that some of you want to play, I feel is deceptive and deceitful. You're lowering your budget by moving things around, but when you move things around, you're taking from other areas.
We made actual cuts, and there's nothing deceptive about cutting a budget.
Cuts, a cut is an elimination, not moving things or postponing.
That's a disagreement about how much we cut, and we can disagree, but that wasn't deceitful or deceptive.
What, and it was?
We eliminated an entire road job, which was...
Actually, we didn't eliminate it, we postponed it for a year.
That's what you do when you take something out of one year's budget. We are talking about the following year, like, I cannot speak to November 2025 yet. So, anything that we don't do during this budget, I guess you could argue is being put off, or you could argue it can be postponed, but I think if the road needs work, then the road needs work. It's just a matter of whether it is in the budget that we're working on at the moment, which is the only one that we can really speak to. We can't make promises for the next one of what we will or won't do.
And there's nothing deceitful about that. We did that in the open without any smoke and mirrors.
That's your, that's your opinion, that's fine. Okay. I stand by my words and my vote, I have no objection.
Deceitful and deceptive?
Exactly.
Any other comments from the board?
I would like to comment that I disagree, and I, I would like to say for those who would care to hear it, I don't feel that I was deceitful or deceptive. I think that the choices that we made was to cut some things and to take money from other places for other things, which resulted in a bigger decrease because we took some money from 1% funds, and we also decreased some of the work that we planned to do in this budget, which we can only, I mean, the roadwork's not going to go away, we know all these roads are going to be fixed every X number of years anyway. So, um, that's, I would like to have that stated.
Other comments from the board? Comments from the public?
Different topic, or are we...?
Any topic, you're, you're a woman. State your name, state your purpose.
Karen Harper. So I have two topics tonight, I'll cover one right now, and I have no idea about this article, I'm a little surprised, more than, but this may fall into a category of accidentally deceptive, deceptive, so I guess I'll leave with this one. When talking about how to make cuts to the budget, we discussed the roof on the town hall as a priority, mentioning how many years people had wanted to put it up, but also thinking, and the unusual order in which renovations have been made. But there was comment from the town manager that, having checked with the state, it was felt that either using different materials or not staying exactly as the roof is now could cause us to be ineligible for state funds and various grants and project. Someone sent me a letter that went back and forth between the state and the town manager in December, and the exact verbiage of that letter coming from, hang on now, hold for it, a woman named Caitlin Corgins, Tax Credits and Grants Coordinator at the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development. In response to the town manager's questions, she said, "Changing the material of the roof will impact the historic character of the building. While this change alone might not cause the building to lose its historic status, it is this type of change that over time will slowly lessen the building's historic integrity. The township considered the impact of this change given, other changes that might be necessary in the future to ensure continued use of the building." So, sorry guys, I really do have an interest in historic preservation, and I couldn't figure out exactly what she was saying. So I called her up, she was on vacation, and instead I hit the bonus round and got Laura Treishman, who's the State Historic Preservation Officer, nonetheless herself. And what she told me just about two hours ago for our consideration is that, as far as she knows, a historic building has never been delisted from being a historic building because of changing a slate roof to something else. Meaning, that that alone will not disqualify us from future grants or historic buildings. Secondly, that, she echoes everything that Caitlin said, you know, it would be lovely if we had all the money in the world for us to do exactly the thing that has always been there, but across the state, there are towns grappling with, you know, having to make budget cuts. And she said that she can cite at least one other example and tell us more about it if, if we're interested, of a historic building that is having its roof replaced by standing seam on a temporary basis. Perhaps all, or perhaps part of that roof, she was going to get the details, but that it would be possible if you needed to do something on a roof, I'm going to reference, for example, fix a chimney, and you were thinking that you had to do everything all at the same time, that's not the case with regard to the position of the Historic Preservation Office. So I offer all of this up because if we end up in a position where we're still looking for areas where we could potentially do something creative, or do something more staged than we were planning on doing, it sounds like there's openings for that without putting our precious and beloved building at risk from a historic rapture. I don't think I can comment on somebody in the office, can I?
Well, add a question. Oh, oh. My question is...
Okay, please come up. Yes?
It's a fun way of doing it.
Cecil Williams said, I just have a question for Karen.
Can we address the board?
I have a question for the board to then ask Ms. Halliwell.
Ms. Halliwell.
Is the suggestion that we not spend the money for a slate roof so as to use the ARPA funds that have been committed to that to somehow help our budget, and if so, how would she suggest that go about? And also, I believe that we have several numbers that the town manager has supplied in the past regarding the cost of the resources, and if I recall correctly, a standing seam roof was significantly more than the slate that is proposed.
Okay, I want to make a remark myself first and say, for clarification purposes, the, the roof on the building is not a budget item, it does not have an effect on our budget, it's ARPA money, it's not in the budget at all. So whether we put the roof on or not will not change the budget or our tax bill. Secondly, when looking at a, the bits, which I have done, the difference in value of the slate roof and the standing seam roof is very little in dollars and cents, yet the standing seam roof will only last 20 to 25 years before it is dusting and we have to replace it again. And in 25 years, the cost of that would be amazing. And the slate roof that's on the building now has been there 160-plus years, and it can go 100 years with however many maintenance intended. So I know myself, the slate roof, to me, is saving money and it's not quite there yet.
So I do kind of debate the, the value of one type of roofing against the other, although I think that there is some nuanced correction to some of the things that you just stated. I think that we're using the low end of the life of a standing seam against the high end of a life of a slate roof for comparison, so I think we should equalize those. Also, slate roofs do require repairs, slate roofs should be inspected and repaired as on a spot basis twice a year. And we talked about that in one of the town meetings, might have been the one that the chairman wasn't here, and we're glad he are now. Where you can patch slate roofs, and taking the whole slate roof apart and not knowing what you're getting into underneath the slate roof can be a huge proposition with a big swing factor. It is ARPA funds that are going to the roof, but if they were not used for the roof, or if part of them were used for the roof, it would free up ARPA funds, and I'm not one of you learned souls to know whether those funds could be diverted to something else at this point. But I kind of personally have a feeling that we're going to still be talking about budget after the vote next week. I hope that there might be something, knowing, you know, this more precise understanding of whether it will impact the historic nature of the building would be something that would cause somebody to think creatively and come up with a suggestion. That's all.
Thank you. Sir, Vicky was had her hand up next, so we're going over there, and then we're coming over here.
My name is Vicky DeSorda. I was only going to speak about one item right now during a couple of comments, but since we are talking about deceptive practices, first I'd like to remind everyone, a few weeks ago, well, it's probably longer than that now, but there was a very astute gentleman who made a lot of specific suggestions of adjustments to the budget, and he said, "I'm losing face, faith in the process." I'm losing faith in the people. I'd like to speak about Mr. Hopkins' front porch floor post on 418, suggesting that the author of an article in the paper, that they had been more dispassionate, and he was referring to the title of the, the article. First of all, the author and the person who writes the title are not the same individual. I want to clarify why I did not go to anyone in the town office to ask any questions, but went to the website. The last time I went into the town office, I was lied to about the intentions of attendance of the select board meeting the evening of solar eclipse, and I want to know if it was to discourage all audience participation or just mine, I do plan on filing a formal complaint. Furthermore, I expressed my desire to join the committee, set the DEI committee several times in 2023, one of which was in writing to the town manager in July of 2023, to which he never responded until nine months later, the day that the committee was officially making another community member a part of the DEI, and I think this was just an attempt to cover his bases. I have complained about a town employee who threatened to come to my home and protest me for an article I wrote. I've complained of a DEI member approving a home mortgage through a 501(c)(3) for a 3.5 interest rate in November of 2022, when the rest of Vermont was paying 6.6% to 7% interest for mortgages, and it was to a person who has a six-figure compensation package. I questioned the equity of that to area residents. All of these issues have gone ignored and unaddressed by the town manager. I find him to be lackadaisical in his duties and hope he is reprimanded, if not removed from office during his review tonight. The government tracking program that is in this year's budget should remove any barriers for the deputy town manager, Bill Moore, stepping up into this position. Additionally, the form that the DEI has, and this was sent to me at 5:30 the day of Mr. Hopkins' post, is not on town letterhead, it is not signed by any official of the town, although it was not presented that way on front porch form. And I see that it is on tonight's agenda, I'm sure to be formalized, and I hope Mr. Hopkins will rectify his post immediately. I am frustrated at losing faith in town government. And my second item tonight, my expectation of disrespect from both current and former select board members has clouded my point of view. I have misinterpreted select board member Heather Nielsen's intentions in explaining the budget, and have used a very derogatory word. The very moment I pressed send on an email to the recorder, I knew it was a mistake. For this, I am sorry. Using the word mansplaining, it is derogatory to both men and women, and I apologize to all of Brandon for having seen it in print. I acknowledge that while I desire to be a part of the solution, I have inadvertently become a part of the problem. As I do not believe in a double standard for anyone, my intention is to immediately modify my language and be more mindful of my feelings. Heather, I apologize to you, I'm sorry for hurting your feelings with my words. Socioeconomic, educational, and life experience continue to be a barrier in our ability to communicate and work together effectively. I have apologized to you before, I apologize to you today, and as I too am new to the public arena, I anticipate having to apologize to you in the future as well, as we both continue to learn and grow in our new roles. I am called to be a peacemaker in my profession, and I hope I have done so effectively today. I acknowledge the humanness in each of us.
Next public comment, right here, please. Next public comment, right here, please.
I'm Jim Leary, and I'm here to remind everybody that one of the most exciting days of the year is almost upon us. I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about. It's Rain Up Day. Saturday, May 4th, we'll be meeting in Van Stand in Central Park across from the Bray again from 8 to 10. I'll hand out Rain Up Day bags and room assignments. We're going to have hot coffee there. There's plenty of garbage to go around, so if you can make it, we'd love to see it. It's an opportunity to unify our town. If you're not available on that day, you can contact me in advance. I can get bags to you prior to Rain Up Day and give you a room assignment. So I hope you'll consider coming out, and especially if you have young children or friends with young children, or trying to recruit the next generation of Rain Uppers. It doesn't appear that the garbage is going to be anytime soon, unfortunately. So again, please spread the word, and we hope to see you there on Saturday, May 4th, at the Van Stand from 8 to 10.
I saw another hand up. I don't know where it was. Someone in the back, right back there?
Sandy Nail.
Sandy Nail.
First, I'm so glad that Vicki apologized to Heather, so now I'm the one to blame for saying that. My name is Sandy Nail, and I'm here with a letter that I wrote to the Chair of the Brandon Select Board and that I thought would be discussed among the select board. As far as I know, it hasn't been. Things can change. It was to Doug Spaly, Chair of the Brandon Board. I was shocked when Tim Giles began another rant disparaging audience members at the April 8th meeting of the Brandon Select Board. I remember attending my first Brandon Select Board meeting via Zoom. We were in the middle of COVID then. The meeting was going on. Everything was going well until I heard a voice criticizing someone in the audience. I think I let out a scream, as your remarks were disrespectful and patronizing. I raised my hand and said as much. Nothing more came of this. It was then I decided to attend Brandon Select Board meetings in person. Later, I learned the person was Tim Giles. It was over a year and a half later, I attend Brandon meetings in person now, and I am still listening to Tim Giles disrespect audience members. Forget that we are residents, taxpayers, and voters. Tim lashes out at anyone who attempts to discuss an issue he does not like or feel appropriate. I feel he has a disingenuous nature and regularly serves up comments that contain undertones of disrespect. Sometimes I even feel he takes over the meeting as if he is the chair. As we try to make inroads to lowering the budget, Tim continues to criticize comments and questions from the audience. I now think that his critical derogatory nature is having a negative impact on the select board's poll. And to this end, I request that he be removed from being a member of the Brandon Select Board. Thank you.
Throw a flagrant, please.
I think I'll leave.
I was not planning on talking about this item tonight, but since you read your letter, I would like to read my response, so that it is also part of the record and that the remainder of the people in the audience and that might read about this in the paper will hear my response. I responded one day after she sent me that letter. My response was, "Sandy, I would like to respond to your email regarding the April 8th Brandon Select Board meeting. I sat along with the entire select board and allowed the public the opportunity to speak with the board and hear ideas and concerns about the budget. It is my feeling that the discussion only repeated what had been discussed at open budget meetings throughout November and December by the select board and the Budget Committee. The elected board members must decide what they feel is the best for the entire population of Brandon. That is what the then-board did last February, and that is what the new board has done as we have reworked the budget. I do not feel that Tim Giles disrespected the audience. He also is a resident, taxpayer, and voter, and an elected select board member. He can reply to comments that come from the public at meetings. The budget will be in the hands of the voters on April 30th." That was my reply. Since that time, a day or two later, I got another email from Sandy Nail. "The Chair of the Brandon Select Board, thank you very much for your response. I'm sure you gave my complaint much thought. I am concerned whether or not you had a special meeting with all select board members to discuss this matter." Sandy, I did not respond because we did not have a special meeting. If we were to have a special meeting, it would have to be more. Another time period going by, and I get another email from this mail that says, "I have given more thoughts to your comments regarding Tim Giles. Yes, Tim is a resident and a voter and a member of the Brandon community. Tim is also not the one being disrespected, ignored, and not listened to at select board meetings. People who are speaking are also speaking, or many others in agreement that the budget is too high and the board is not cutting out the real sub. That would bring the budget down. Too many want what they want, when they want it, and are not willing to let go. Whether it be hiring and/or paying assistance, nice people, though uncertain, unnecessary at this time, or cutting adult recreation programs. If I can see this happening, the general public can see this happening too. It's not rocket science. When people see others not listening and not wanting to change in order to succeed, I feel that by not sharing my complaint with your board is also disrespectful. It does not support the transparency or taking..."
An attorney.
Yeah, right. Approach to anything, which goes against the principles of DEI. And last week, as recently as today, you told me you did not talk to board members about the letter before deciding you would not dismiss Tim. You did talk with at least one board member. She...
Only one.
Only one. She spent, she sent her husband to my house the other day to mainly intimidate me, telling me in simple words that I should not have supported Vicki's post in the reporter or post in front page forum. He threatened me. If I continue, it will be my fault, and Ray will end up as the chair. He said this to me, sitting in my house. Do I need an attorney to attend meetings with me? Now, lastly, I would say, the reason I have not responded to these is because there is no mechanism in the state of Vermont for removing a select board member. Reading from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Book Chapter 2, "Once they have been elected, a select board member to office, the voters must abide by their decisions until the next election. There is no provision in the law for removal or recall of a select board member." So there is no reason for me to follow a special meeting of the select board to do something that is not legal to do. That's Sandy and my comment. Hang on, I'm not going to go deep with a very tight. Do you want to respond to anything?
I always appreciate people coming out to our meetings, and I always listen with an open mind to what people have to say. Sometimes we don't agree. That's what I think government is for, is for us to bring our differences together and work through a process and come out with a collective decision. I'll continue to be respectful and listen to what people have to say, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
And raise your back and arm.
Thank you. Cool. Oh, a big part. My name is Ethan Nelson. My name is Bruce. I think I'm Bruce Nelson. A lot of you remember him. I was, I don't know where to start. I guess I'll begin by saying Sandy Nail is someone I admire deeply, has been a close personal friend. I brought her a loaf of bread with my six-year-old the other day. My six-year-old was standing around the bike home, playing with some piggy cookie cutters. I expressed to my friend and neighbor Sandy Nail after carrying her bags of mulch for her and her bags of sunflower seed for birthday. I recently repaired her easel with some barrel bolts that I had in a Benz, as the neighbor does. I had recently changed her light bulbs because I was encouraging her work with the steam mural project. And I went to my good friend Sandy Nail, who I admire and I love. And what I expressed to her was, "I'm concerned, Sandy, that your message about policy items is being lost in personal attacks, such as calling my wife a linebacker." It did not go as planned. I'd rather not talk more about it, but when Sandy responded with emotional anger, my six-year-old began crying, and I picked her up and I left. But I texted Sandy and replied, and I said, "My regard for you is such that I believe we can work through this," and that is still true. I really admire Sandy Nail quite a lot, her intellect, her creativity, and what she offers, things like the soup kitchen, the soup food, soup bowl. I also really admire her work with the children, letting them have a mural, and I appreciate those efforts, and I would like those to be the emphasis of what I left her with. However, I had some other things I would like to express to the board as well, if I may. I was conceived and raised in this town. I consider myself part of a long tradition of Brandon characters, and I'm going to have to name a couple of them. One Brandon character who is a personal hero of mine was Betty Mokel. And another was Russell Wayne Baldwin. If you consider those two personalities, I'll get a thought about who I consider myself to be in terms of my influences. I believe in walking around in town with no shoes on, no matter who judges you, because in Brandon, you can be yourself. I also believe in the words of Betty Mokel, and she said, "What we have here is an honest-to-goodness community, and it requires tending every day. That is our daily task." She was referring to taking care of your neighbors, giving them something if you have an extra, sharing something if you have an extra, working through a disagreement without antagonizing or without making any tax personal. And she showed that with her volunteerism, which I continue as the president of one of the many nonprofits she started, the Brandon Children's Fund. This reminds me of some of the Brandon history not too long ago. I apologize. It could be easy to mistake me for an optimist. It could be easy to mistake me as disinterested in public events. I admire it. I believe that as soon as good people stop doing good work, everything goes to hell. So what I am is an activist, and I believe that what you folks are doing, when you stand up for paving roads and allowing for recreation for people who can't afford it otherwise, I have benefited from that as a working adult, who was the first one in my family to go through traditional college, and I've benefited from that as a child who grew up as one four of a disabled widow on fixed income. So when we talk, and I hear a lot of discourse about the working poor of Brandon, we're speaking of these things as if they're abstracts. I know the vast majority of you folks here are small business owners who have been working poor at different points in their life. These are not abstracts, and I know you folks are the working poor that you've been sworn into protection, and thank you for doing so. I could go on all the way. I'm going to dumb myself up, but I want to point out one more thing. About five years ago, we voted down about five budgets in the world. Budget? It was different. It was a different town manager. It was a different board. We voted a new budget. We voted it down. We voted a new budget. We voted it down. Did it about five times. It was a controversy over a pizza machine break. Folks in other towns, we're talking about Brandon like it's the laughingstock of the region. I was asked by a reporter for the Rotten Herald, "Did you vote for the budget?" I said, "Yes." They asked me why, and I said, "Because if someone doesn't like the hard work of that select board, they should run themselves and put themselves in that at sea. They should go forward and do what you folks have done, which is do the hard work to come up with a compromise between..." I know of the group up here, I know you folks represent, I'm not going to single out any names, radical conservatism, radical liberalism, Democrats, Republicans. I know that you folks don't just represent those in an abstract way. You have experienced poverty, starting a small business, working in the business world, and I appreciate the work that you folks have done to come up with a compromise. We are not accustomed to seeing that. We are accustomed to seeing corporate greed. We are accustomed to seeing a Senate in the United States that cannot reach a compromise or an agreement. We are accustomed to seeing the federal government dysfunctional, and so we are expecting that from you folks. And I believe a lot of that displaced anger and fear is being directed at you all, but I'd like to thank the board tonight for standing strong on those compromises that benefit us with things like recreation and roads that keep us all safe and healthy and a community.
Thank you. Can you see if there's anyone else who wants to talk to this? Judy Bundy has her hand up. And Kevin, he'll be next. Before I come back to somebody, I'm going to people who have not talked.
My name is Judy Bundy, and I've spoken here a couple of times, too. I'd love to make some responses to the last couple of speakers, but that would not be a good use of your time. However, what I do want to ask about is the meeting next week when we get to talk about the budget again before we go to the polls to vote. I am curious as to how the board is planning on presenting that revised budget at that meeting. I remember in the last years, and I apologize, I wasn't at this last town meeting, first one of this, but the presentation that the board made in terms of a fairly detailed outline of the budget was very effective in the past years, I thought. And being kind of simplistic older folk, I really like the pie chart, and I would really love to see some pie charts with comparisons of what is proposed this year versus what was last year and the year before, particularly with regard to the percentage of our total budget that each of our departments uses or contains. I think that a presentation like that for the public would help people gain more of a historic perspective. I think that some of the people who have been most vocal and most negative about our current budget situation have not paid as much attention to that history of our budgets as would be helpful for them to understand. I think that the budgets have been held very tight on any department, but I'd like to see it in writing, and I'd like to see it at that meeting next week, if that's possible. I think that would go a long way towards showing the voters as to how this budget was arrived at. Secondly, I would like the presentation to also include information about all of the ARCA funds and how they have been allocated, what the total was to begin with, how they've been allocated. I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe that a lot of people in town are confusing our necessity to designate ARCA funds within a certain timeframe to a spending spree. And this, the way I might describe this myself is, when that first came out, I wanted to see the town do something wonderful with that one-plus-million dollars, something that the town could not do otherwise. Because we are a small town, and we've always tried to keep a tight budget. Eventually, the federal government expanded what those funds could be spent on, and then the conversation turned more to what pressing bills we have or what big upcoming expenditures we have that might be helped with those ARPA monies. But in fact, it's a one-time gift, and my analogy is, I was hoping that we wouldn't take the hundred-dollar birthday check that Aunt Louise gave us and spend it on the electric bill. But in fact, it looks like we have to take those ARPA monies and spend them on some nuts and bolts kinds of things. And I would like that to be clearly outlined to people, so that people understand what monies that are being spent, that are being criticized as being so, I don't know, over the top, are really those one-time monies that we have to affect things right now. And if that's, Karen suggested like, or alluded to, that not doing, not using ARPA monies for the roof of this building might allow them to be put towards some other thing, yes, that's possible, but this is a one-time fix. Those other budget things are gonna come back into the budget the next year. So if we can avoid raising taxes as much because we can do this ARPA money to be a stopgap, well, let's understand very clearly that that is what we're doing. We're taking this one-time opportunity to use some money that we didn't think we were gonna have. And then the budget is gonna be what the budget is gonna be in years going forward. So I would really like the decision between ARPA monies and the regular budget monies to be very clearly pointed out at that meeting next week. And hopefully, because we didn't mail out ballots ahead of time, the majority of the voters who go to the polls next Tuesday will come to, enough people will come to that meeting, get a clear explanation of how the funds are being allocated, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
There was somebody in back there. Kevin? Never getting back there. Yeah, I knew you did.
My name's Kevin Norton. Just wanna say briefly that I trust the integrity of the board and the individuals on it. It's no benefit, except to serve the town, being on a select board for a month. There's no money to be made. There's no glory. So I appreciate your service to the town. I appreciate your honesty and integrity, and I trust that you're doing the best for this town. I also trust that the appointments to the DEI commission were well thought out. I think we have a great commission, and I look forward to their actions. And then I wanna add that the physical manifestation, excuse me, I agree with everything Ethan said about it. The physical manifestation of this building, just wanna remind the board that this building was built in 1861. In the fall of 1863, the Brandonites who had served at Gettysburg offered a dinner in this room. In 1865, two soldiers that had died in battle over this, lay in state in this room overnight. In the fall of 1865, when Company Agent appeared for law, the Brandon Company came back, excuse me, the town met together in this room, this whole day. So we have, the lifeblood of our community exists in this building. And to bring things forward a little bit, I've had the pleasure to be in this room three times in the last four days. Two for fantastic Brandon record events that were incredible amount of fun, and the third's tonight, participating in our democracy. So we need to think about that. And if this building doesn't need final siding, and it doesn't need a cheap new roof, the 1861 roof, it's just running out now. It's part of the integrity of the building and replacing it's a great idea. Thanks.
I'm looking for someone. Hang on, Karen. I got to, I don't know. Is there anyone else who has not spoken that would like to come up and say something? Not seen you, Karen. Go there, good.
And I appreciate it. And I just have a couple of things, but I'm just having a little humor. Last, last summer, Seth kept walking past my house on Park Street because he was checking in it, you know, in the end, folks at Lilac Inn, and it was his pack. And we always would have that nice little banter. So one day I opened the mail, and he actually mailed me a handwritten card on his personal stationery suggesting that I might think about, wanna think about getting involved with town government. I bet he wishes he had. But I thank you, because it opened up for me an experience of learning that I have truly treasured and just at the beginning of the journey. I wanna say one thing about the construct, the concept of respect. In the position that I had in business, I had to undergo an awful lot of DEI training. And there were times when if I stepped out of line, and my team would remind me really, really quickly where I was a little off the path. And one thing that was reinforced by experts over and over again is that respect is not, whether we are being respectful is not about how we think that we are being, but about how the person who is receiving our comments feels that they are being treated. And that seems really unfair in certain ways, because you know what's in their heart, but, and you can't always control how people take it. But it is an accepted fact that if people feel like they are being disrespected, there is something wrong. So if, if folks in this room keep coming up here and saying, "We feel disrespected," it's not enough that you guys don't feel as if you're being disrespectful. Some work needs to be done to bridge that gap. That's all I'm saying. Number two, removing select number numbers, there actually, I believe, is the law, a statute and a chapter, the numbers of which I don't remember, that exists and can be adopted by towns, but it's only been adopted by, I don't know, seven or nine or eleven towns, and I don't remember the chapter number. And it involves a complicated formula, that X percentage of the population that has voted in the same year that the person that is being questioned was elected, have to vote for a discussion and a vote on that person. So I'm just saying there is something out there, but Brandon has never adopted it. So for us, it's a moot point as of right now. My main topic is swales. I don't wanna be up here talking about the swales. I hate those swales. They're inconvenient. They're dangerous. You trip over them. They're ugly, even when they're burrowing. Snowplows run into them. Cars being driven by people who have had one, two, and beers, you know, land inside of them and can't get out. I got a picture of a tow truck pulling somebody out, if I can search my archives of photos. They're not my idea of a good topic, but they're there, and they're there as signage, right? That's why we got them. Everybody remembers Park Street when you used to get a leak on either side of it whenever there was a torrential rain. We need some form of drainage there, repick, and accept it grant money to have that thing be swales. Here's my concern. I have no problem with citizens helping with the upkeep of a public asset. But those swales, when we took the money for Park Street project and the sub-project that was those swales, we entered into a legal agreement, a binding agreement, that said that we would maintain those swales in a certain day. And I did a little research, and I believe it's ANR, the Agency of Natural Resources, but I think there might be other governing board bodies too. Literally, those who approved us getting those grants, if they see that we aren't following through on our commitment, they can come back after the money. So I don't wanna see us put ourselves at risk. I tried to get a copy of the, the original agreement and the sub-agreement, just to read it and see what we committed to. I think that it is true that we committed to planting them with a certain set of plants, in a certain way and a certain proportion. And I think we also committed to a certain routine and ritual of maintenance that we completely haven't done, and which is kind of why they're in the condition that they need to be eliminated. So once we get them back in shape, we can start following that plan again. I think somebody needs to go and look and really find out what we committed to, and what those plans really, really are, and how much latitude we have, because we don't need anybody coming back for funds that we've already spent. The other thing is, and I just have a question, I don't know the answer to this. Kudos to Sarah and Wendy for offering to host an info session. It was said in that info session that the woman that signed to speak was the woman that designed the swales or some portion of it. I can't find any record of her, her signature sign on the plans. Her name isn't on any of the past or present rosters of the two engineering firms that drew the plans and which are out on the town website. So I'd like to just make sure that we check that we really do have an official here, because if I look at her timeline online, and she was likely a student, so she might have been some intern doing something, I don't know. But there's something that just doesn't completely flesh out, and we can find out so much about every other aspect of this, and you can't answer that question, I thought maybe we could look into it. So I'm currently out of concern that we put ourselves at risk of having somebody looking for money back. Let's not do that.
Thank you for your comment. Now the next question.
I just wanna say for the record that Sandy is not alone in her complaints about Mr. Gao. There have been official complaints as far back as 2021, as far as I know. I don't make any more.
Any other public comment? One quick, free time. We're moving on. Thank you all for your comments. Item six, appoint downtown parking solutions group. Mr. Chair, presenting some, or Bill Moore?
There's a memo in the packet, Mr. Chair, with some interests. And there's a list of six names I would respectfully recommend that the select board consider appointing. These folks who are willing to serve on the parking solution.
I make a motion that we appoint the six names on our list, Bernie Carr, Stephanie Corliss, Dorothy Alangeman, Janet Wodlack, Bill Moore, and Barbara Stridner to the working group on the downtown parking solution.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Discussion. The board.
I had thought that we needed a select board member, and I'm happy to do it if we need it, but I wasn't sure, or second guessing, because there wasn't a select board member listed on the list, but maybe it was a given.
I recommended that there be a select board member or planning commission, and I think it would be wonderful to have them.
I would like to, but do I have, would I have to do the board? Okay. I was like, oh, I forgot something. Okay. I'm happy to be the select board member if nobody else was chosen for it.
Great. I have no problem with that. Anyone else wanna come from now? We have a motion and a second. We kinda are amending it and adding seventeen.
My only comment is to say thank you, as always, to people willing to serve on these committees. We appreciate your service.
Yes, we agree with that. Thanks.
Ralph?
I just wanna make a comment about parking. I had a resident show me a 1945 Brandon down in the fort. And the police chief wrote in there, the number one issue in Brandon was parking.
So we're actually easy, is that what you're saying?
Still have the same one. Okay. Motion and second. We amended it to add the seventeen. All in favor of naming all seven? Will you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? We have a committee. I assume they're gonna start working. Is someone, Bill said yeah. Thank you. Item seven, the Forest Area Shared Use Path Engineering Study Proposal. Bill Moore, appreciate your comment.
This is something I previewed. That's much better. So I initially have made this information available to the select board. This is a part of our due diligence, our Forest Area Scoping Committee, Forest Area Path Scoping Committee, put out our P. It was answered by exactly one firm. We evaluated the firm. This is a good proposal, and the committee endorsed it, and we are asking, since it's outside of the amount that the town manager could spend, that you approve the, the proposal.
Discussion from the board?
No, I think he's looking for support. I make a motion that we support this proposal. I think it's a good idea.
Any other comments on the board? Where, where the money coming from? Bill Moore?
Mr. Coolidge, the select board last year approved $10,000 of the matching funds, and the other $40,000 comes from a grant that we applied for. The select board approved the application of that grant, approved accepting the grant, and approved the matching funds as well. We're coming out with 1%, $10,000.
Additional questions? Take a moment to support. I have the motion to do the comments. We have a second on the motion of support for the president, president.
Just a special question. Oh, I'm just gonna bend it. Have you publicized or released the particulars of the trail? I've heard a lot about the trail. I think it's great, but what are the particulars? Have you released that to people?
I'm glad you asked. So this is a part of the process. This is a scoping study. This is to determine what routes could possibly work to make a connector between Forest Area and Brandon. So there'll be a robust opportunity, a robust process that will involve public comment participation. So the board will engage with the engineering firm. The engineering firm will guide us through the process of having public meetings and identifying possible solutions for that connector back.
Okay, so how did you come to this conclusion of how much money is needed if you have gotten the detail for the trail? Ah, the trail, okay, go.
Oh, I wish the trail were only $50,000. This is for the design, this is for the simple design, baseline design, engineering of possible solutions. We applied for a municipal planning grant. They awarded us $40,000 to engage an engineering firm to help us with the process. A trail like this will, I guarantee will be, the cost will be greater than $50,000.
Is this a walking trail or a walking biking trail?
It'll be a multi-use trail, so the ideal, again, with public engagement, getting a little ahead of the, the process. But it would be a multi-use path or a multi-use connector. And they'll include all alternatives, whether on the road or off of the road, to connect Brandon and Forest Area. And the ideal is we have multi-use paths or biking or walking. That is our general, the small committee, the small committee, sorry, I re-organized, I'm sorry. Small committee's intention, but again, this is something that takes stakeholders, this is something that takes stakeholders like yourself, like anybody that wants to participate in this process and these public hearings, provide your input, because it's not about just the five people running on this committee, it's about what, that's what that's bringing, and that's what this scoping center is supposed to help us provide.
So Cory definitely has to, that's where I get.
I know, I'm sorry, is this appropriate this year?
But, vamos, no. This trail will accommodate toddlers that have, that are great school students, and bikes, and adults. And who sort of supervises this trail?
Someone comes down to the scoping segment about what, that this, yes, obviously will be made much more clear after the work that's been done to determine what the best alternatives are, what those are, and how we'll have to manage all of those recent conflicts. This is not a new concept for Brandon, they've been talking about this for quite a while. I remember there was a young parent moving to Brandon in 2004. It was St. Bruce's School Program that was administered by the H.C. Transportation, and he got way down the road of considering the path, but this is, I guess, the furthest down the road that we've gotten as far as, this has been, you know, the Forestale sack that this village has known outside of Brandon for a long time, and maybe that connector would be really important. There are sidewalks up there, there's a school, a senior center, and people, folks had a safe opportunity to connect to Brandon by way of walking or biking, and it's been a priority for various people growing up. It's great, Brandon, and so we're looking to push that forward for this.
Well, I'd like to talk to you a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have Karen restate the motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that the board accept this shared path engineering study.
And I'll second that. Any board discussion? Item three, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote? Vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll let the, this is the project manager, second board for the running regional planning commission, Noah, I'll let him know.
Moving on to item eight. Request a letter of support for the solar array on Clark Mill Road.
Mr. Chair, there's a letter in the board packet from the Brandon Planning Commission, which has heard presentation regarding this, and the chair of the planning commission is here for the evening if you have a question.
Okay. So to start the discussion, I will make a motion that we provide this letter of support, and then I report hearing the planning commission chair's comments.
Second for that motion, a letter of support?
Oh, I'll second for discussion.
Discussion from the board?
Can you guys stay close to your mics so we can hear what's happening?
You're not here. Again.
Come on.
Is, does Jack want to speak on this? Item yes, please.
Where's Park Mill Road?
Jack Schneider from the planning commission. The process that we use when we evaluate any renewable energy proposal is detailed in the town planning enhanced energy portion. There's a questionnaire that developers need fill out, and then they come in and they present to the energy committee. If the energy committee feels that they can support it, it goes up to the planning commission. If the planning commission feels it can support it, it goes up to the select board for a letter of support to go to the public utility commission. The one we're talking about tonight is SolarFest. They bought the 10 acres behind Ron's Auto off of Champlain Street. There's a dry area behind that's totally screened in every direction. There's only one neighbor, actually two neighbors, SolarFest owns most of the surrounding property. And then there's one other house on Champlain Street. But the, the questionnaire and the photos of all the views from different directions are in the minutes for the planning commission meeting of April 15th. It's going to be a relatively small solar array, it's 125 kilowatts, which will be about 15 or 20 households. They intend to make this a community solar array, and they'll have people buying shares. So those 10 or 15 or 20 folks will be able to buy shares in SolarFest, and then they will be receiving credits on their electric bills. Thank you. Any other questions?
Anyone have any questions? No. No questions, sir. You can hold on, we have a motion in the second to, to a letter of support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no one? Done. A hand.
One, one more question, just do you have any?
Hey, hey.
That's where the road is. So it's on Route 73 west of Brandon on the north side of the road, a little distance past the highway department, it's the site of the former Ron's Auto.
Sort of across from Lozai.
Her Clark sawmill was there for years.
I couldn't really hear you, Jeff. I couldn't hear enough of what was going on about this. Could you explain to me, somebody, who was doing the solar array? I, I didn't, I couldn't hear it.
It's SolarFest. Mr. Hopkins, is he in?
So there's, there's a nonprofit group which own land, owns land in Brandon, it's called SolarFest. They own the land, they want to build this array of land that they own, which is on the north side of Route 73 west. There's no town involvement, if that's a concern, there's no overtaking from the town or anything like that, or overtaking by the town or anything like that.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Moving on to item nine, updating the Declaration of Inclusion. Mr. Hopkins?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there's a one-page memorandum in your packet which was published, which indicates the declaration which was ratified by the Atlantic Brand Select Board on January 25th, 2021, which made Brandon the third community of now 143 Vermont communities to adopt what has become a statewide declaration of inclusion. The 2021 adoption was affected unanimously by that meeting, and the organizers of the declaration have since made an update to it. They indicate that a year or year and a half ago, they modified the length, the declaration with the additional language, which is shown below on that same one-page memo. So my recommendation, my recommendation to the board is that you consider updating Brandon's Declaration of Inclusion so that it could be in line with the statewide mission.
And I make a motion that we update our Declaration of Inclusion.
I'll second. You go ahead, Ralph.
Motion, Ralph second.
I would go on to comment that I look forward in the future if this changes again, that we, we stay up to date, which is worth updating as necessary.
Agreed in a good sense, I'm sure it's, it's bound to be.
Any other discussion from the board? Let's vote. All in favor of the motion to update our policy, please say aye. Oppose, no one? Ayes have it. Time to pay bills. We have the warrant in the, in the packet.
I make a motion that we approve the warrant for $161,926.73.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any questions on any of the items in the warrant? We will move. All in favor of the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We will now move for a five-minute recess and move for moving into executive assessment. Thank you all for coming.